How are you doing?
Good morning, County Council. I would now like to call to order this council meeting of May eighth, two thousand and twenty five. At this point in time, if you are able, please join us in the the standing and singing of O Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. And at this point in time, Madam Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Counselor Mackey, Counselor McKay, Counselor Carlton, Counselor Pringle, Counselor McQueen, Counselor Nielsen.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Dickert, Counselor Clentner. Counselor Kivini, Counselor Body, I believe we're expecting later this morning, Counselor Greg, Counselor Milne, Counselor Dobrine.
Present.
Warden Mattresshoffs.
Present.
Counselor Bordenio.
Present.
Counselor Echols, Counselor Hutchinson. We have all members in attendance today with the exception of Counselor Body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let us begin by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of the three fires known as the Ojibwe, the Odawa, and the Potawatomi Nations. And further, we give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nauvoo, known collectively as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. To our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. At this point in time, I would like to put out a call for any declarations of interest. Seeing no hands, we'll proceed on to the adoption of the minutes. The first recommendation is that the minutes of county council meeting and committee, the whole meeting dated April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor McQueen. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. The next recommendation is that the closed session committee of the whole minutes dated April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five be adopted as provided. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor McKay and seconded by Counselor Carlton. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. And the third recommendation under minutes is that the special county, Special County of Gray joint all council meeting minutes dated April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Kivini, seconded by Counselor Dickert. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. We do not have any closed meeting matters at this point here, so we'll move on to the reports. And we do have one set of reports. It is the Board of Health Minutes, and we do have Dr. Ara here to speak to it. But at first, I'll just ask to put the motion on the floor. So it's recommended that the Board of Health Minutes dated March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five be received for information. May I ask for a mover? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mackey, seconded by Counselor Pringle. It's now on the floor for discussions. So good morning, Dr. Ara. And if you would like to speak to the information in those Board of Health Minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Warden. Good morning, Council. The highlight of the recent update is the board approving the two thousand and twenty five traffic budget. And the regular business of the board continues. Measles probably is the main highlight in our area. And we continue to see increase in number of cases, but nothing unmanageable. There are around ten locations for exposures are posted on our website, and our team follows with the with the contact that have been identified. And again, it is busy, but nothing unmanageable. Open to questions as always, Madam Warden.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Ara. Are there any questions for Dr. Ara? Yes, Counselor McKay.
Yes, I was just wondering, I've been asked by a number of people about the measles shot. And if you've had it as a youngster, you're safe. Some people maybe need the second shot. And then I was informed that you need to have a blood test to see where it stands as far as getting your second measles shot. So do you recommend a second shot?
Dr. Ara?
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for the question. It brings an important subject. Anybody who was born before nineteen seventy is concerned immune because measles was circulating, and that's natural immunity. After nineteen seventy, it is highly recommended for people to have two shots. One shot will provide immunity for life in around eighty-five percent of the people take that shot. In every hundred, there are fifteen where they will not be immune. Two shots will increase that percentage close to ninety-nine percent. And we see this from the cases that we follow on daily basis. All of them are people who have not been fully immunized. The test itself is reserved if we don't have a record or the person does not have a record. We can figure out if they are immune or not. But in general, it's much easier to have two shots instead of risking any exposure.
Hey, thank you. I think that's some important details. And Dr. Ara, if any members of the community or anybody has further questions about that, they're confused, or they don't have that little tiny yellow card that many of us no longer have, then what would be the best recommendation? Who should they contact to find out more information?
Definitely contact our team through our website or phone. We do have access to the records that are available in the system. And if not, we can recommend certain tests or provide the vaccine or direct people to where the clinics are.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Yes, Counselor Echols will go to next. And then we'll go to Counselor Bordenio after that.
Thank you. And through you to Dr. Ara. The minutes that we have are from the March twenty eighth meeting, Dr. Ara. It was a rather short meeting. A bit of a clerical error in there, I believe. And I'm looking to Counselor Carlton as well, too. It was a closed session, and it has that the chair was recused or recused himself. But it does, I think it fails to mention that myself and Ms. Carlton were recused ourselves as well from that closed session. And it doesn't say that in the minutes. So as much as they were approved at the last Board of Health meeting, I think that that should maybe be amended. And that Director Carlton and myself were both recused as well, too.
Through you, Madam Warden, I believe the minutes reflect the public session. Anything that happened in a public session, any further people recused from the session in the in-camera or not, that would be in the in-camera minutes, which are not part of these minutes. In all cases, we can, as you know, the minutes have been reviewed and the recusation, you know, I don't want to speak about the in-camera minutes per se, but your comments have already been considered.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll go to Counselor Bordenio.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning, County Council. Through you to Dr. Ara. I've had some members of the community ask in regards to back to measles, upward trends or tics, or just is there any concern from through our region based on your experience, Doctor?
Sorry, the line was cutting, Madam Warden. Is the question about tics or measles?
No, measles, I'm sorry. Up ticks in upticks in any measles across the region, concerns at the community level?
Yeah, definitely. In the southwest, there has been increase in measles circulating for a number of months. In Gray Bruce, in the past couple of months, we've seen this increase. The majority of the public has immunity through vaccine or exposure. Anybody who's over seventeen, the immunization rate is above a provincial average, and it's in the ninety-five or around that number. Under that, there is around eighty-five. With those numbers, I'm not losing sleep over major outbreaks or uncontrolled transmission. Having said that, we all need to be vigilant. And probably the most effective advice, if somebody is sick at around this time, to stay home. We always recommend to stay home when sick, but during this time, many of these cases, you know, they manifest as just common cold or some other symptom. And it's but over but for the shouting when the transmission already happened because the person has been about out and about. So in summary, there is increase, there is concern, but as I mentioned, nothing unmanageable.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Dr. Ara? Yes, we'll go to Deputy Warden Milne.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you for your report, Dr. Ara. You say the number of cases is manageable. I'd be interested to know what is being done to manage the outbreaks in the various parts of the community?
Certainly. Anytime through you, Madam Chair, anytime there is a case that's identified by the lab or the healthcare providers, according to the Health Promotion Protection Act, there is mandatory reporting to the Office of the MOH. So we receive all these reports. And as soon as we do, we have a number of staff designated for this response to contact the case, ensure that they receive the appropriate care. And in the receiving of the appropriate care, every, every visit to the healthcare system is managed closely. So there is no exposure in that visit itself. We get a list of all the places that the person was and all the people that they have been contacted or exposed. And we contact this group as well, the contacts. And so that's a mammoth test, mammoth procedure usually. Sometimes a case, for example, if they happen to attend to the ER, and in the ER during these couple hours that the person stayed, there are sixty or seventy individuals. Now we need to contact all these sixty, seventy individuals and see who was with them accompanying them. And we do have the capacity and the expertise to ensure these procedures are executed as soon as possible. And that's the goal of containment. Any place where we don't have access or full list of the people who were in that place, we post it online, we put it in on the social media to let people know that they have been exposed if they were in that location, but within specific, in a specific window of time. And we provide to all these groups of individuals and group of people the, the recommendations that they need to do, how to protect themselves, where to find the vaccine, where, how long they need to isolate. And we follow with these individuals. And there has been optimal compliance in, in our work with the community. If there is lack of compliance, theoretical scenario, there are orders or legal legislative tools that allows us to engage enforcement services to help us in the task. But at this point, everything has been optimal collaboration with the community and the partners.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? Not seen online or in the chamber. Thank you very much, Dr. Ara, for that extra information in the presentation of the minutes. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And next, it's recommended that bylaw five, two, three, two, twenty five be introduced and taken as read first, second, and third time, and finally passed, signed by the Warden and the Clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation, and engrossed in the bylaw book. And it is for, as I mentioned, five, two, three, two, twenty five, the bylaw to confirm all the actions and proceedings of council. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Greg, and seconded and seconded by Counselor Echols. It's on the floor for discussion. Counselor Greg?
Point of order. I don't think we voted on just receiving the.
Oh, thank you very much. Excellent call. So may I ask for a vote for all those in favor to approve the minutes that we had moved and put on the floor? Okay, and that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Counselor Greg. And, oh, sorry. Yes, yes, Counselor Echols.
Just for the minutes, we're not approving these. We're accepting them, Madam Warden.
Yes, thank you. So I will just confirm that the motion that we have just voted for, for the Board of Minutes is that the Board of Health Minutes dated March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five be received for information. Thank you very much for that clarification. And I do have that mover and that seconder on the floor for the motion for the bylaw. So is there any discussion on the bylaw motion? Okay, not seen any. Then I'll ask all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. We have a number of news and celebrations to begin with from members of staff and myself just before we get into opening it to the floor for other community events that are welcome to be shared at this point in time. And I think it would be appropriate just for us to be doing a bit of a formal introduction and congratulations to who's on my right here now seated beside me, Randy Schertz. So although many of us, most of us know him and know him in the role as Deputy CAO, this is in fact the first council meeting that Randy Schertz is here as the new CAO. So if I may formally introduce our new Chief Administrator Officer as Randy Schertz, and but for the benefit of the viewing public and people who may not have had the opportunity and the luck to be able to work with Randy so closely as many of us have, he is still in the community and in Gray County, no stranger to us. He joined Gray County in two thousand and two. So he has been here for a very long legacy and has been a vital part of our senior team since two thousand and ten, when he was named the Director of Planning. Most recently, he served as our Deputy CAO since two thousand and twenty one, providing steady leadership and deep understanding of the issues and opportunities facing all of our Gray County communities. Randy has consistently demonstrated a strong commitment to public service, a collaborative spirit, and a clear vision of the future. Our council has every confidence in you, Randy, in your ability to lead our talented staff team in delivering high-quality services for Gray County residents that we rely on every day. We look forward to working closely with you in this new role. And we all know that you will continue to serve Gray County with integrity, dedication, and excellence. So congratulations, Randy, and we are excited to work with you in this new role. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Warden, for those kind words. I'm really looking forward to the new role and continue to work with council, as well as the fantastic senior management team that we have and all the great staff that we have throughout the county. I'm also looking forward to continue to move forward with council's priorities and to just build on the solid foundation and the solid path that Kim Wingrove has left us with in terms of all her leadership and vision over the last ten years. And so thank you again for your vote of confidence in me in terms of moving forward with that and building on that solid, solid foundation. So thank you so much.
Excellent. And more exciting news that we have, I'm going to look to Director Cornell for our first news and celebrations item.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I am very excited to share with County Council that on Wednesday, April the thirtieth, Gray County Long-Term Care was honored to be acknowledged in receiving the Advantage Ontario Innovation and Excellence Workplace Quality Award for our Color at Coach program. This is a really exciting program that we have partnered with Prep LTC and received some significant amount of funding through Prep LTC, supported by the Ministry of Long-Term Care, focused on really looking at our mentorship preceptor program in long-term care. And there is a couple of excellent slide decks and presentations that are available on the website if you'd like to learn a little bit more. But the crux of it is, we are always looking to support students and onboarding new team members. And as in any industry, you have people that orientate, coach, precept, and often historically in long-term care, that was a, hey, you're good at this job. So by the way, we're going to ask you to do this coaching as well. With this program, we invited team members to put their hands up to say, I want to be a preceptor or a mentor. I want to be a color at coach. The Prep LTC program provides structured learning and coaching on what makes a good coach. And, and then we receive funding to be able to backfill them so that when they're working with a student, it's not on the side of their job that they're trying to get done. They can dedicate their time and attention to the student. And as a result, we have seventy color at coaches across the three homes. So seventy team members put their hands up to say they wanted to be part of this program. We supported two hundred and sixty clinical placements last year across the three homes. That's twenty-nine thousand placement hours. We have entered into partnership with twelve additional educational institutions to support students across Ontario, actually. And we onboarded and hired thirty-five of our students as permanent team members. So it's, it's, it's a really amazing program. It's really a huge acknowledgement to receive this award. On the thirtieth, Stephanie Matos, the program coordinator, and four of our Color at Coach captains came to Toronto to join me in receiving that award, which was really exciting. And we have a short video to share with you now.
The Color at Coach program in Gray County's long-term care homes is revolutionizing the recruitment, mentorship, and retention of care providers. The program offers structured mentorship to students and is supported by partnerships with the CLI Prep and fifteen local educational institutions. With a focus on onboarding and training, Color at Coach has transformed mentorship at Gray County's three LTC homes. Students are welcomed to the program from day one, and they are seen as active contributors, not temporary visitors, to the homes. The program is overseen by a dedicated placement coordinator and is supported by seventy staff member mentors, who are able to dedicate time to guide the students, thanks to Prep backfill funding. The program's success is remarkable, with over two hundred and fifty clinical placements in the past year alone. It has resulted in a three hundred and fifty percent increase in mentor participation and a significant boost in student retention. To date, over thirty students have become proud team members in the county's home.
Thank you very much. That is indeed a celebration to see, not just the influence that is benefiting those who are here and those in our long-term care homes, but the mutual benefit that the coaches receive as much as the students do, and the fact that, that you're spreading the good news and, and sharing that program right across the province is incredible. It is great to see us as leaders, and we thank you for that leadership. And next on, also on the good news front in terms of wellness, we also had the opportunity, a number of us were here, myself as Warden, but also there were a number of local mayors and deputy mayors also in attendance for the Bruce Power announcement that was just last week, to donate one million dollars to the WELL Community Collective in support of local youth. And it is expanding across not just our own county, but Bruce, Gray, Huron, and Perth Counties. And it was very exciting to hear them announce that this kind of dollars put behind it in support will help our communities and that we have, we have new, new communities designated as the next hubs to be able to expand this, this particular program. It is, we did hear the deputation about it not too long ago, but I would like to just to look to, to Director Shaw, if she'd just like to remind or share with members of the community what that actually means, that wellness, the WELL Community Collective, what it means for us here in Gray County.
Good morning, everyone. The primary initiative of the creation of the youth hubs is aimed at providing safe and supportive space for youth to receive supports and connect with peers. They're using a model that was developed by the Centre of Mental Health and Addiction. It's proving success in a lot of other regions. THE WELL brings together a wide range of social and community services, and they focus on mental health, addiction, and personal well-being. They are planning to raise an additional six million dollars to fund youth hubs in King Hardin, Owen Sound, Stratford, and Exeter, and of course, future hubs for other communities. So certainly a worthy and great resource for our communities.
Thank you, Director Shaw. And I think there are three key points that are very exciting about that is, is one is that it's also looking to be preventative, to be able to encourage wellness in youth before they get to the problems where there are particular crisis points in which they can also be supported through this program. And the other focus that was definitely shared with us in the news and the update of the program is that it is really considering the rural aspect for our young people, you know, that they're, it is harder for young people in our rural or small-town communities to get connected than they might have in larger urban centers when they do want to reach out for that. And the third point that I very much appreciate as a former high school teacher and a former college teacher, is that the youth program goes up to age twenty-five. And I think that's so important that, that rather than just aging out of high school at age eighteen and nineteen and being expected to have all the answers and be expected to be able to take on all the stress that, that is in our current lives, it is really good to see that young people have a way that they can continue to seek out and be able to find those programs that, that meet their, their social and support needs as well. So with that, then, we will then move on to anything that comes from the floor of council. Good news and celebrations from your own communities. We'll start with Deputy Warden Milne.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In each of our lives, there are momentous events that at first may seem day-to-day, day-to-day. Just hold on, Counselor Echols, just hold on. I know you're not used to holding on, but try to hold on there. They may seem, these events may seem routine, but in hindsight, they are very impactful in our lives. And I speak not of the momentous event last night, where the Leafs are now two up on the Panthers, but we're not going there this morning. I want to say to the group that I understand that the Warden has, or is, celebrating an event today. And I'm almost, I don't presume to know what the number is, but I'm almost certain that she will not have natural immunity to the measles virus. So with that, I want to, on behalf of the group, if I may be that auspicious, and say happy birthday to the Warden. So if people would join me in singing, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Andrea. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Thank you very much. I do have natural immunity. But I will share with you that my mother was in woe going, oh, this is such a shame you have to work on your birthday. And I did. I actually said, I said, Mom, the best place I can be is with my friends in Gray County. So thank you very much. Are there any other news and celebrations from our community? Just looking online. And we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Yes, go leave school. So I just wanted to share with everybody, the fifth annual RAM rodeo is coming up on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of May at the Beaversham Agricultural, I guess, grounds, you want to call it, arena. And this is, again, our fifth annual rodeo. And we've raised up to date for and we've raised up to date for four years, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Markdale Hospital Foundation. So we made a commitment about, uh, well, five years ago that we would try to raise a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And, uh, hopefully we can achieve that with the help of everyone else. We have a number of, again, sponsors that do sponsor the event. It's both, uh, on the Saturday and the Sunday, and the Kins, local Kinsmen are, are offering the Cowboy buffet breakfast from eight till eleven, both this, uh, Saturday and Sunday. Where they're also organizing a, a country western DJ dance for the Saturday night. And, uh, you can go online, just Google RAM rodeo. You can purchase your tickets and, and save ten dollars online. So, uh, hope to see everybody out if you're able, and it's a fun event, and it's a, it's a family event as well. I'll just say one last note. This sort of started in two thousand and twenty, when, as you know, COVID, I guess I'm going to say two thousand and twenty-one, when COVID was sort of, uh, there, and we weren't having events. But, uh, we were able to throw something together for September of that year because there was no fairs and nothing was going on at those, remember? And we sort of threw it together, and we had a very successful event. I know everybody was supposed to wear masks, but there wasn't a mask to be seen. But anyway, uh, the fun part of that was when families came out, the smile that, that were on kids' faces because they've been, haven't been into, to anything for a long, long time. And I, it's something that I remember, and just everybody else remembers, that people were able to attend something that we weren't able to attend for quite a long time. And, you know, again, kids coming and seeing horses and all that kind of stuff. It's just something that was left in my mind. So it's been a success, and, uh, from that first year in September, we moved it to May because we did not want to compete with local fairs. But, uh, anyway, it's, it's a great event. Come on out if you can, you know, quite, you'll, you'll enjoy it. And I say, go to RAM rodeo, and you got the full schedule there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements? Okay, yes, councillor Eccles.
I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, mention November the twenty-fourth. So after you're done with the rodeo and you do want a quality meal, the, uh, Newstead Lions, for the last, uh, it's going on for forty years now, I have, uh, hosted Lobster Fest. It'll be one of, uh, two times that the, uh, small village of Newstead has a huge traffic jam as, uh, we usually serve up to fifteen hundred meals, um, at, uh, Lobster Fest, lobster, steak, and, uh, Alaskan king crab, uh, on the menu. Uh, any, uh, of the Newstead Lions, uh, can be contacted. I do understand there are still a few tickets for anybody that would like to, uh, be there. Uh, live music, it's a full evening, starting, now it's a full afternoon, starting at four o'clock. Um, meals from four until eight, and, uh, social time until we decide to close it. Um, it's a wonderful thing, and, uh, lobster is, may not be green and gray, but it is feminine and it is Canadian. So, uh, absolute great time, anybody that wants to be there.
Thank you, and councillor Eccles, you said that's May twenty-four? May twenty-four, okay, excellent, anything else? All right, then, uh, in that case, then, I'll look for a motion to adjourn this council meeting. Uh, moved by councillor Hutchinson, seconded by councillor Pringle, all those in favor? And council is adjourned, thank you. We'll give a moment to switch over to committee of the whole.